Side there.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hope we all had good Halloween last night. We're going to call to order the Board of Selectmen Monday, November first, two thousand twenty-one meeting. We'll still be considered the Board of Selectmen until, although we voted last week, it'll still be considered Board of Selectmen until the state approves that amendment. So we'll call the orders, we'll do a roll call vote, and in the room here, we have Sean Farrell here. And then on the phone, we have Rosemary Kennedy.
Here.
And Jamie Newton.
Jamie Newton here.
And I think Darcy is not with us tonight. She's be absent this evening, and William Olson here. And I'll let you call your meeting to order.
Thank you. I'll call to order the Hamilton Finance and Advisory Committee at seven oh two P M. on Monday, November first. And we'll take attendance. Christina Shankhargrove here.
Nick Tensin here.
John Pritch here.
Dave Wanger here.
John McGrath here.
Okay. So Joe, I think we're gonna skip through the board committee, we'll come back to that for our meeting, and we'll go right to the the agenda item for today is really talk about F Y twenty-three budget process, schedule, and goals. And there was a document issued, whether an email by Alex and then a schedule issued. So Joe, what's the first thing we should go through? Are the goals first or schedule first?
Yeah, I think that generally this time of year, we try to meet with the board and the FinCom to get your sense, a sense from you what your goals are for the upcoming budget year so that we can communicate that to the department heads. Internally, we're ready to send our guidance out, but we need to include any additional guidance from your boards. So thank you for meeting jointly to accomplish that. And if you guys want to get into establishing what your goals are for your boards, we can take notes and share that information.
Yeah, so what, where did you guys leave things at your last meeting? Did you guys establish these goals or these, because Alex had a nice summary of the goals.
Yeah, this was Alex and I, this is internally, this is what the administration's kind of goals are, but we, you know, we need to know what the policy boards and the recommending boards want, so. This, that was just kind of meat to start the conversation.
Okay, I mean, I think we could go through these as sort of a starting point. Unless you guys had a different list that you've sort of looked at.
No, we haven't actually, so that'd be great if we can just go through this and we can take any comments as we go.
All right, so obviously a goal we talked about last year, the first goal obviously is to avoid an override situation by minimizing expenditures increases while working in partnership with all relevant stakeholders within our financial limits, including the Hamilton, Winham Regional School District Administration. So obviously with them being the largest portion of the, and that's what we did last year. Last year, we worked with them to make sure we did not have an override. I mean, I think obviously that's our number one concern is to not, as we get closer to it, and to work closely with that board, and I think that's on the, on the calendar, right, to work with them, Joe?
Yes, it is. Yep.
So that first meeting is. For that meeting, do we have their calendars as well?
Yeah, calendars should.
Alex, can you, Alex?
Yeah, I'm here. So the first public meeting with the, with the school district is on December first. Joe and I will be meeting in the interim with the administration as well. So that's one month from today.
Mr. Jeff, I want you to pull up that schedule real quick. You want to share? I didn't, I'm not logged in, but in the orange is where you identified the, the school administration.
Yeah.
And I should add that there was already a, an initial meeting with the
The chairs.
School board, yeah, and the chairs of the the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom and the school committee and the school administration. So we were happy to have that early meeting to sort of set us up for a series of meetings coming up.
Correct, just sort of a kickoff. We don't, we didn't talk about it specifically, but at least we ensure we all want to work together, be on the same page and communicate. My goal is that we don't want any surprise. We don't hear in two or three months, like, oh, I didn't know about that. So my goal is that anything that comes up, open on us so we don't get any last minute surprises on the budget.
Right, because we've got, what, about a, a month and a half before the school committee presents the budget to the administration? It's usually like mid-December, right?
Yeah, but they've, they've built in extra time this year, so there'll, there'll be extra meetings. There'll be two meetings with the five committees instead of just the typical one. That's the wrong document I'm trying to share.
Because we're trying to change our kind of past lack of involvement, I guess, because we've, we've typically had the buzzet, budget presented to us and they almost vote on it the next day sometimes. So, so this is good. They were getting a little bit ahead of it. Especially with the override potentials in both towns, I would imagine.
Oh, the second item, sorry, go ahead.
Hey, this is John McGrath. This is my first time through this, so pardon the naivete, but generally, where have we gotten surprised in the past? Is it centered around the school budget?
Yeah, it's typically, we've had some heavy increases in the percentage over the last handful of years, you know, it's, it's, I would say, averaged six, six percent and gone up to thirteen at different times when they presented the budget to us.
Right.
And to us, that's a surprise.
Yeah.
And it was partially a matter of timing.
Right.
So the school would sort of present the budget to us and, and then there was a vote and it was all, all over rather quickly, so that's why we're putting a lot of effort into meeting them frequently before that happens and, and in between. And I saw in the schedule that twelve fifteen is the school superintendent presents the budget to the school committee.
And, and are there any known hot areas as of right now? I mean, to me, it seems as though they may already have a sense of whether there's any large items that they know they're gonna put in. So is that, is that, is that not the case?
Well, I mean, I think the surprises, at least in my past experience has, it's been, we haven't really started dealing with O P E B on the school side yet, and that's been in the budget and out of the budget a couple of times. And then their capital planning has been in the budget and out of the budget sometimes. So there's some kind of flip flopping that's happened in the past with some bigger kind of ticket items and then pulled out at the last minute or modified. So that's kind of where the, where the kind of trying to figure it all out starts to happen, I guess.
The other thing that happens with us is that the school will say, we're gonna be, we're gonna be similar services to last year and give us a budget which is, say, three percent of what it was over last year. And then we have these initiatives and we're adding on on top of that. And so it's always an additional initiatives that are, what are the surprises, I think, to us.
I see.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the two other ones, I think, from last year were the audit district expenses went up quite a bit.
Yeah.
More anticipated, and then the state funding was sort of unknown at the time. So I'm not sure at what point we'll know where that sits.
I see.
My, my sense is that we'll have, you know, when the five boards get together on December first, we'll get a good sense of where they're at. There, the school is internally doing its budget process now where they're meeting with the leadership team from each of the buildings and kind of developing what they think that they need both to maintain the current level of services and where they think they may have gaps. So by the time we meet with them on the first, well, we should have a sense of what it is they're thinking is, is, and we will be able to provide them, actually very shortly, with what we expect our revenues to be so that we can, you know, get them to start to focus on, on, on that, on that number. And, you know, that's two weeks before they present it to the board, to the school committee, and then that's just a tentative vote. Then there's another month and a half process after that. So you'll be meeting with them both before the tentative budget and then again after the tentative budget's been approved. So that's more than in the past. That's what we've been working towards the last couple of years. So it should help.
One, one final thing I want to mention is also then there's the apportionment. So that can either exaggerate any increase or minimize any increase depending on which way it swings between Hamilton and Winham. I don't know, we should already know, I would imagine.
They get, they get the numbers in October, so we should know.
Yeah, it's, the shift has come back to Hamilton, so.
That's what we thought would probably happen.
Yeah, we expected that. The shift, I believe it actually came back to Hamilton last year.
Yeah.
So we're, we're still, we're still in that same shift pattern.
I have one more thing on that first item, avoiding the override situation, which I think is important, very important. It's good that it's the first thing on there. However, I think the FinCom has talked about this in the past. If we, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot to avoid an override and create a situation where there's a certain override coming up next year. So I just think taking a multiple, multi, multi-year approach or look at the increases in spending and again, making sure that, you know, if we could, we could cut all we want and avoid an override situation, and if that just means that we're gonna have to have an override next year, then maybe that's not the right way to go about it, so.
Yeah, I think that's the thinking.
Yeah.
Joe, in terms of property, how's the property value going to affect the override this year since properties have gone up such a?
Yeah, Alex, why don't you talk about the?
So, sure, yeah. So, so new valuations, we just got them back from, who's working on valuations for us. And so what that will do is it'll drive the sort of overall amount that we can levy up. And so the, the override number is not a static number. It changes as values, you know, go up or down, then the amount even tax will move with it. So as values go up, then the the sort of dynamic move of the numbers goes up with it. And so the, you know, the higher the valuations, the less likely you are to meet an override, I guess, in simplistic terms.
And when will we know those numbers, Joe?
Alex, do you have those numbers? Do we have the new valuations in from?
We have new valuation. We're still working on revenue projections, so this is just kind of like one piece of the pie. It's probably, it's, you know, the biggest piece of the pie is property value, but we'll have those in the next week or so. I've been working on them for the last couple of weeks.
All right, the next goal was a, a level service budget, basically maintain same service for the residents of Hamilton that, you know, they're used to have come to enjoy, depend on. I think we've done a good job doing that. I've sort of been at the detriment of restructuring something to the town hall to give the residents the services they need, so. And obviously, that's what we prioritize, and we'll get to those tough decisions if we have to, but we do talk about those often during the process. Staffing levels, make sure they're maintained.
Before, if I may, before we move on, I'd like us jointly to consider and recognize the value of our employees who've worked through a very difficult period, i.e. the virus, I'm assuming, performed with loyalty and dedication to the town. My memory is our contract settlements are normally in the two percent increment range. The C P I, of course, has gone up, cost of living, in excess of five percent year over year and in August. And wages nationally have gone up over four percent year over year and in September. So I, I recognize, Joe, the sensitivity of engaging in discussion about labor relations. But I, I would like both boards to have as a goal some form of recognition to our employees. If not in base, then in some one-time measurement and recognition of the factors that I've related.
No, it's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. So Joe, what contract will be, have to be negotiated between now and signing the budget?
Three of our unions are up this year and, and two of our chiefs, two of our department heads, so.
Okay.
So I'm sure I'll be hearing about that.
It's not just hearing about it, Joe. It's our taking some.
I didn't mean to be flip. I apologize if that came across that way. I'm just recognizing, I just merely intended to express that I recognize that that's gonna be something that we have to be mindful of this year.
Right, I, I appreciate that. I think we have a responsibility to be proactive in terms of finding some way to, to provide some increment above and, above and beyond the norm, given the factors I've related.
So Joe, on that note, in terms of staffing levels, have you guys done, I mean, obviously, we've been understaffed. Have you have a different plan for next year in terms of what you're gonna be asking for? Are you thinking of trying to maintain and hire the people that are still?
Internally, we're changing the budget document this year to kind of, and, and we're, we're challenging the department heads to think a little bit more critically about what, what they do, what, what programs and services they provide and how they provide them. So I expect that over the next month, as they get ready to meet with their FinCom counterparts, they'll, they'll be thinking about their staffing levels and, and what is needed to, to provide this level of service that we provide. And that's where the bullet point that talks about appropriate staffing levels to complete all necessary tasks is there. I think we're gonna be trying to learn some things about the way we, we manage our departments this year, so.
With the same note, you're understaffed, correct? Still, you have any positions you're looking for right now?
Well, we're understaffed in terms of we have some open positions that we're advertising for, but.
How many positions is that?
We've got an open health director position and an open council and agent director and an open director of assessors.
Two on, two in this building and one outside?
Two in this building, one outside.
Okay, and so the question is, is, as maybe was, David mentioned, is any of it, you know, do we need to budget differently for those to fill these positions? Are we not budgeting the right amount? Is it a budget issue?
I don't think it's a budget issue. The council and aging position is advertised, and we've had several, several qualified candidates apply. The application period closes this week. The director of assessors, we intentionally paused because we're investigating, sharing that service with Winham. And the director of health, we actually have a finals candidate that we're negotiating with, so I'm not sure that it's that, but.
Anybody else want to comment on staffing?
Budgets?
Can I add to what Joe was saying? You know, the market for some of these department head level municipal positions, market's gotten tighter and there are, with the labor market how it is right now. I don't know if budgeting is the problem, but, you know, other communities are having to offer more and more money to sort of attract candidates because there is a really tight labor market right now. So it makes hiring in general, you know, good people, makes it a challenge. So there's sort of that caveat to consider.
Agreed.
Our next item on the goals was maintain all capital assets at or above their current level, including buildings, roadways, underground infrastructure, and equipment. So I'll start with that. And obviously, we have a big, obviously, shoot at town hall that we're trying to deal with, and we'll figure out when we can get that back in discussion and rework that. But, but other things that, that we're discussing here. So in terms of our, I know that one of the big things we brought on a couple of years ago was our wa, our water plant. And so is that something that we're gonna need to budget for? Do we think we have enough money, what's already been approved on that?
Well, we, I don't think we, I, you know, we'll come to you next week with, with a presentation and some questions and ideas about ARPA. The water plant, the pretreatment facility did come in over budget partly due to stresses in the market created by ARPA, or by COVID, rather. But, but one of the principal uses of ARPA funds is supposed to be for water and sewer.
Do you have a V P O what ARPA is? We may not know.
ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act, which was passed by Congress after President Biden was sworn into office. So this was a federal infusion of dollars all the way down to the local level to help communities deal with building back out of the pandemic. One of the principal cornerstones of ARPA was to invest in water and sewer infrastructure. So we can, without little, you know, with some internal debate, but with, with no real pushback at all from the state and federal government, we can direct a portion of our ARPA funds to cover increases in prices for projects that we had that were due to the, to the pandemic and what's happened since then. So certainly, yes, we are, saw an overage on, in the last bidding of the pretreatment plan. But we have ample funds on hand with the use of ARPA funds to cover that additional cost.
Then ARPA is good for through twenty twenty-three?
Through twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, okay, so we have three years.
Yeah.
Are there any other things that ARPA would be able to cover the difference? And I know the water plant was a couple hundred thousand.
Be an ongoing project, I think is a challenge, right, Joe?
Yeah, it couldn't be something you've already, it couldn't be, you can't replace funds that you've already, you know, expend, you can't replace funds that you've already, you know, encumbered and appropriated and things like that. We, Alex and I plan to make a presentation of the board and then afterwards, to FinCom and the Capitol Committee on, starting with Board of Selectmen on November fifteenth, to talk about what ARPA is, how much we have, what we can spend it on and what we can't spend it on, and then invite some input from all three boards so that we can help, you know, set some priorities. That fund, those funds don't have to be appropriated by town meeting. They're, some of them are already in our bank. They just have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So we will begin that, that conversation, starting with the meeting on the fifteenth.
Hey, Joe, this is John. I had one question on the ARPA money. We talked about this last FinCom, and given that this is not a town meeting item, we probably need to demonstrate real clear oversight and approval of those funds and make that available to the public, I would guess. People are gonna want to know where the money went and what it was used for, so it sounds like, I think we just need to go out of our way to demonstrate real solid oversight on that pool of funds when, when appropriate.
Yeah.
John, if I can briefly, so because this is a part of a federal grant, there are very strict reporting requirements that come with the use of the money. And so we will be, we're mandated to have sort of very tight and regular reporting on this money, and so we'd be happy to provide updates to, you know, all, both boards and on the town's website when ARPA money starts being utilized.
Yeah, I just think it belongs on the town website when appropriate, you know.
Sure.
Need to demonstrate that, the real transparency on this money, because I'm willing to bet someone will ask.
Right, and I think, I think to your point, John, I think having people understand what the money is and what we can use it for is important, you know. I think how we spend it's important, but I think it's just as important that people understand what the restrictions are with it and what we can do with it.
I completely agree. I'm, I'm sort of talking about a year from now, after decisions have been made and things have been launched. I think we just owe it to the community for a, a very transparent presentation, you know, talking like twelve months down the road.
And then, and then, Joe, every, every dollar gets spent has to be voted by the B O S?
Yeah, that's all, that's all we'll do, yeah.
Okay, so that's all we'll do. So it'll be a public meeting, discussion.
Yeah, maybe an open, open meeting.
And then we'll track it and have a report that we issue at the end of the year. I think, you know, we can discuss that next week.
Yep.
And Alex, that has some kind of probably special tracking within Munis or something like that. It would put it in some special kind of a thing to track it?
Yeah, it'll, it lives in its own fund right now already, so it's tracked sort of separately on its own, which is how we do sort of all federal grants, and this will be, it'll have its own fund member set up. And then if it is spent against, it'll be tracked sort of independently.
Gotcha.
And I would, and I would suggest that having a FinCom have a chance to look at that might be appropriate, so, anyway.
One of the things I think is, what Sean was saying is that making sure people understand what the money can be used for ahead of time is important. John, your point about making it available for transparency is exactly right. But there will still be people who say, well, why didn't you spend it on X, Y, and Z?
Right, why do you have to go to the schools?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure that's gonna happen.
Good example, yeah.
Yeah.
If you, if you want, I can give a brief kind of overview on the category.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't mean, I didn't mean to derail the conversation, just wanted to make that point, that's all.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that in the next meeting on the agenda on, on November fifteenth. Those who are listening, tune in next November fifteenth, and we'll go through.
Thanks for offering that, Alex.
And more.
No problem.
And just on capital assets still, do we feel like there were things that we deferred last year? Are we gonna be doing some catching up this year, I guess?
Well, we, I mean, we're, we're gonna work off the five-year capital plan that we've been working off and updating it. The department heads will start to, just as they, they will with the budget for operational expenses, will start to evaluate their capital request and, and put them up in hand and have conversations with the Capitol Committee and then the FinCom later on. The, the capital, the five-year capital plan is a, is a framework to have those discussions, but, you know, stuff moves around on that list all the time. Every year, it's, it's designed to do that. Sometimes you have something on the list that you think you can wait four or five years, but then over the course of the next seven or eight months, something makes it that you can't wait any longer, so something moves up to that, and something else has to move back. So we'll be having all those conversations starting here this month.
And again, it's not always, you know, cutting costs are important. Saving money, and again, I just want to make sure, and I know that department heads do this and pay attention to this, it's not always cheaper in the long run to put stuff off, so just some careful consider, considerations about what really we should be doing right now in order to set us up.
And maybe that should be a goal, right? Maybe it should be a goal, is that we don't want to, like you said, don't, we're not gonna save money this year, spend double next year, right? So.
Right, if there's deferred maintenance, it needs to happen. We need to make sure it's appropriate, right? And we don't want to let something go too far that we're spending twice as much, like you said.
And when, when we go to the department heads, are we asking those questions, for example, hey, I, I see you have a really crisp budget this year, but what, what are the two or three things you haven't put in your budget that you know are out there? So do we ask the, the budgeting in that sort of two tranches, current spend, but what's, what do you see in the future? That would be really valuable information.
We can certainly do that, John, when we meet with the department heads.
Yeah. I, I, because I think that just needs to be a fundamental tenet of doing budgeting is use the value of their vision for the future and just have them brief us in the, in the current. So I think that's a, that might be a valuable goal or consideration to ask the department heads to use their crystal ball, what do they see coming that we may not know about? Even though it's not on the current budget.
Yeah, and we can also refer to the three and five-year capital plans, too, are pretty helpful for kind of all those outlier things that are coming up on the horizon.
I see, yeah, great.
Joe, Capcom is on, on target there?
Yeah, there's, I believe they're having their first meeting on Wednesday, even though we don't have anything really in front of them yet, so.
Our next one was basically talks about our, our policy, financial policies for our reserve accounts, free cash, stabilization funds, water enterprise, et cetera. We've done a pretty good job of maintaining those and building those up. Is there anything that we have not funded fully to our policy yet?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll need to make an annual, we'll need to make an annual contribution to the O P E B, but our, our general stabilization and capital stabilization funds reached their minimums that were required last year. The budget going up will require maybe a small addition to those, but for the most part, we've done a really good job of getting ourselves to where we wanted to be with those funds this year. We'll be, we'll have a good year's worth of numbers now since the last time we adjusted the water rates, so we'll be able to see if the water retained earnings is kind of coming back and, and stabilizing. You remember the last few years, we've been taking from the retained earnings to balance the budget and the water enterprise account. Our hope is that, that is, we've stemmed that tide. We'll, we'll know better as we get into looking at the numbers here in the next month.
And I think, too, with those accounts that we've got our, our kind of minimums in, you know, it's, it's time to have the conversation about how much we're going to keep adding to those over the minimum. Are we gonna keep a certain percentage over the minimum? Are we gonna, you know, we don't want to inflate them too much, but.
If we know we have a capital project coming up, should we put some money aside?
Exactly, we kind of start thinking about the most prudent kind of path for adding to those funds.
The fund capital projects, we just talked about that, so we'll get that report, obviously, and find out. ARPA, we've talked about, haven't we talked about ARPA anymore? So that was obviously a goal was to, was to offset operational capital spending as appropriate with, with ARPA over the next three years. Anybody else want to comment on capital projects or ARPA? The last two is, one is to introduce an accounting division within the FinCom department, which will consolidate some internal financial functions and reporting responsibilities under an accounting division. This reorg effort has started and stopped a few times in years past, need to meet the operational needs of the town. So Alex or Joe, if you just want to give, you know, a minute and talk about what, what this means and when we'll hear more about it?
I'm gonna let.
Yeah, no problem, yeah. So really what it means is that the, we have a general finance division, which includes myself and the Assistant Finance Director, Town Accountant Diane Katz. And I'm recommending we sort of segregate a separate accounting division, which would, which would be sort of charged with keeping track of all accounts. Be in charge of state reporting with sort of oversight as a finance director. This is sort of a model that most communities use. They would have a treasurer collector, an assessor, and then an accounting division. And then with oversight sort of provided by a finance director. And so we need an extra body, a full-time would be great, but I think that we're budgeted right now for a part-time, and we're advertised currently to try to hire a part-time person to help us fill some needs in our finance operations. So it's kind of the higher level need during sort of the, as the budget process sort of moves further along and starts unfolding, then we'll, you know, have more, I guess, discussions about this. then we'll, you know, have more, I guess, discussions about this.
So since you're coming to us next on the 15th, we also talk about this in more detail on the 15th?
We can. Yeah.
No problem.
I think that it'd be helpful to see it in kind of an organizational flow chart manner as well. So I think when Alex and I talked about it first, I was also a little surprised by the, by the recommendation, but when he, when he puts it out to you in a kind of a flow chart form currently.
It'll make more sense.
Currently, the finance director and the assistant finance director slash town accountant are operating at the kind of same box on your flow chart. And then out from there, treasury and assessing sit. Well, this would, would kind of create an accounting division that would be equal to treasury and assessing, all, all under the purview of the finance director. So it kind of creates more parity among the three, you know, assistant department heads, for lack of a better term there.
Yeah.
And creates an opportunity to kind of more specifically define what the roles for each department are within the finance operation. So without the flow chart, did I do a good job explaining that there, Alex?
Yeah, you did a good job. I mean, you know, the sort of part of the sense is that we want, you know, I want and Joe wants, and I think I'd imagine the boards want finance to be more involved with sort of the operational aspects of the, how the town functions. And this will free up some of my bandwidth to become more involved in operational sort of duties. So the sort of day-to-day running of the organization, how finance becomes more involved. That is, you know, myself or members of the finance staff just being part of, you know, planning process for bigger projects, being more involved with sort of the other departments around town and sort of trying to break down some of the silos that, you know, exist in sort of all operations, but they're really pretty rigid in municipal government. And so a conscious effort to impact that, this is a step in that direction.
No, I appreciate it as a, as a, one of the new members of, of our town systems, we appreciate you trying to make things better and coming to us with recommendations. So we look forward to talking about that with you on the 15th. And the last, your last sort of goal, which is obviously a good goal, is that is basically if the FY23 revenue and excess free cash from '22 is insufficient for funding the entire FY23 budget, we must identify specific expense reductions and/or new revenue sources to balance projected expenses with funding. So obviously that's a goal too, is to have things you're thinking about and planning about for this year, next year, the year after. So as an example, I've been asked to sort of do a quick assessment for the, you know, Chabaco Woods project that's under review with, you know, different, different boards right now. But if indeed it passed, you know, what would that, what would that do for our budget? How would that affect us? So I've been asked sort of do an assessment just based on numbers alone and see what it would, you know, what it would do for permitting funds and tax. So it's fun. So that's an example of if it's an opportunity to increase our, you know, our revenue sources and what our expenditures would be against it. So that's an example, one thing we're working on, but we need to look at other things as well.
Yeah, and I think it's been, it's been a focus of the FinCom for the, at least the past few years to try to figure out any other revenue sources, just in general, even if, even if it's not absolutely necessary to balance the budget. I think it's always a good idea for everyone to keep their eyes and ears open, try to figure out that, any revenue sources that would work for the town.
One question I had on the, on the last one, I, I may just be parsing the language too precisely here, but the reference to excess free cash from FY22, are we talking about potentially funding part of the budget out of free cash and just anticipating what free cash we might have? You know, we've done that in the past. We haven't done that recently. And that's certainly, I think, open to debate depending on where we are.
Yeah. So, you know, the question is, is if we have free cash in excess of appropriation and we are, you know, we're projecting ourselves short on revenue, what do we do? Do we put excess free cash to a stabilization fund or something like that? Do we fund capital projects? Or do we offset, you know, operational costs with it? And so those are kind of the different routes we could do. I would stay in lieu of an override if we have extra free cash, that we would want to consider using that.
Alex, are you assuming we're at the minimum pursuant to our policy?
Yeah. So that's assuming our policies have been satisfied fully.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
It's always interesting. We talk about we hit the minimum, but the minimum is actually our goal. We hit our goal, but it is-
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. The, the, the policy set sort of a minimum allocation. And so assuming we have met that minimum.
Right.
We should change our language.
It's not quite, minimum makes it sound like we haven't hit it. But we hit our goal, so.
It's a, it's a specific percentage of, you know, of the operating budget, the overall budget is what we aim to, 5% for the various stabilization.
I, I think that both boards are familiar with, my stance has been to not put free cash into operating expenses, but that for one-time expenses, for capital expenses, things that are, we have come up that aren't going to be repeated in the future years, if we have excess free cash, that those are appropriate ways to use that. I would still, if we find ourselves in a position where we have excess free cash and we've met our minimum, we met our targets on our stabilization funds, you know, we'd want to try to do what we can with it to the benefit of the town. But I would, I would be recommending as long as, as much as possible to hold off or resist the urge to put it into the operating budget unless it was absolutely necessary.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's been our goal over the last handful of years, right? We've tried to steer away from that because it is a vicious cycle and it's, it's really not sustainable. So, you know, and Wenham has run into that problem and we didn't want to run into that same problem. And we, we've done it in the past and it's just not good financial practice.
Exactly right.
Alex, thank you for putting this list together. I think the only thing really added to this list that, that wasn't already sort of captured something else was obviously to look at deferred maintenance, anything that we, we're not doing this year, we're not going to cause more cost down the road we hadn't thought about. So I think that needs a, a deep, deeper dive as well.
And this is, I guess, kind of a follow-up.
Yeah. We, Tim, Tim Olson and I, we'll be working hand in hand because he has such a large portion of the actual budget and the budget document that he and I are going to be working together a lot. And he's probably the single most familiar with the conditions of all the facilities. So he'll have a lot to say about that, I'd imagine.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of add to that. You know, I'm sure we've had projects that we've deferred that the cost has gone up for, for instance, like the water plant and the, we're just talking about the fuel station out back, things like that and figuring out that difference in the budget from the previous quotes, pre-COVID to quotes now and whether some of those things could be ARPA or whether we have to increase our operational budget or capital plan for it, so.
If I, if I could offer, yeah, that's a perfect example, two, two perfect examples. For instance, ARPA could be used for the water treatment, pretreatment plant, but it can't be used for the, for the fuel station. So, and the fuel station would be the type of thing where we're currently in a situation where we're on a pilot program, fueling our vehicles in Wenham. But their above-ground facility is aging and we're not sure that it's, you know, we haven't, we've been knocking wood. We haven't had to go through a really bad winter with a lot of snowstorms. So it's worked for the last two winters, but we need to find a permanent solution for how we're going to fuel our vehicles. And we're not sure that Wenham's going to want to continue to do that jointly. So we, we're going to have to try to address it probably this year. So that's not on the capital plan because we had already appropriated money for that. But that money is insufficient. So would that be something that we come back and ask for supplemental appropriations that we can complete that project? That's something we have to talk about.
Okay.
May, may I raise a couple of items? I, I should have done this earlier when John asked about unanticipated or surprises. Joe, do we have a clear view of what the schools are going to be looking for in terms of capital projects?
No, not yet, David. They, as they said, as, as we said at the beginning, the, the school committee, the school, I'm sorry, school administration is in the process of its budget development right now. They're working with their leadership team across the buildings and across the district. So they have not put forward, not to me at least, what their capital ask may be for next year, but that will be part of their process. So.
Experience teaches us that that's a moving target often.
Well, I'd, I'd expect that we'd hear something about that at the, at the joint meeting on the first.
I'm sorry?
I'd expect that we'd hear something about that at the joint meeting on December 1st, if not before, at the, at the chair's meeting later this month.
Is there a cost associated with this? One of the schools, they were approved to go to the next step for a-
Well, it, it's still investigated. They, they came over, they came, it was a Cutler replacement project that they asked for. They came over and toured all three, the MSBA folks did tour all three elementary schools and, and asked extensive questions of the committee and they'll make, make a determination.
But that won't drive costs up this year?
Not that you're aware. We'll find out. I wouldn't want to speak for the school district. I'm not sure.
Yep. The other two topics I just wanted to put on our respective agenda, if not for this evening or later, the status of the district agreement, especially since apparently the tide has turned against us this year. And also in terms of revenue sources, Joe, we've spoken at the umbrella or leadership meeting, when last convened, of the seminary, the Gordon Conwell property and being proactive in terms of taking steps to change zoning and other anticipatory steps we might take in case there are commercial opportunities available there. Is that still on your radar?
Yeah, which, you know, we had conversations as recently as two weeks ago with folks at the seminary about what their plans are. They're, they're still under the belief that they're going to be signing a purchase and sale agreement for the dormitories with an entity. That hasn't happened yet, but they told us, as like I said, two weeks ago, that that's what their plan is. As far as I know, the planning board has been looking into what, you know, so underlying zoning for Winthrop School, but I don't think that they have taken up, looking at the underlying zoning at Gordon Conwell yet. Not.
Yeah. As I recall, the discussion at that last group meeting, there didn't seem to be any opposition to our becoming proactive in that regard. And it's a little discouraging. Nothing has occurred in the months that have passed. And that is a potential source of revenue. So I'd, I'd like some emphasis on that going forward. Have I put everyone to sleep?
No, we heard you, David.
The emphasis is, is a private sale to another entity. You suggested we should just promote the sale and the entity, or how are you, how are you recommending it?
Well, the thought was that the financial situation is such that it would be prudent for us to be proactive in anticipation of the potential availability of that property, not just the housing, but the property itself, and how we might take advantage of that in terms of commercial development.
Yeah, Joe, we did talk about that on agenda, but we sort of didn't know if it was to be proactive, but also sort of what are we, try to be proactive with unknowns.
If we want to try and change, so there's, there's a lot of different things that are working together at the same time, right? We have the master plan steering committee moving through, talking about things like that. What do we do with large properties that come up that might need to be rezoned or, or whatnot? And, you know, we, we had actually encouraged and engaged the Gordon Conwell folks to have people serve as kind of liaisons to the master plan process, not be a part of the steering committee, but just to be a part of the process and, and inform back and forth what the, what the seminary's thoughts are and inform the seminary what the towns folk are thinking. Same time, you know, if you want to change zoning, there's only two ways to do that. You have to have a, a petition, a citizen's petition, or it has to start with, which then still has to go through the planning board, or it has to start with the planning board. I, I agree with and embrace the idea of being proactive, but there's nothing we can do on, on these two boards or in my office to initiate that.
Right, unless the planning board takes it up.
There's nothing to do what?
Until the planning board takes it up.
The planning board would have to take it up.
But we could sponsor something with the planning board and go to them.
Right. Wait, we could, we could ask and recommend.
So yeah, you have David suggesting that, hey, if, if the property would sell and make more revenue if it was rezoned, if it sold quicker and for more money and if it was rezoned, then yes, we should be proactive and look at that. I, I wasn't following the discussion, but I think that makes sense.
I mean, and I think that could go into a discussion with Patrick and the zoning board, or not the zoning board, but the planning board about the general kind of Winthrop zoning and downtown zoning, and that could also be put in part of the conversation.
Right. There's a holistic master plan type thing, not a one-off, right?
Exactly. Master plan type stuff.
Right. David, what else do you have? You had those, those are two things?
Yes, thank you.
I'll just go around to my board first, but Jamie or Rosemary, do you have anything else to add to our goals or comments?
I don't have anything to add other than I'm very glad to see that the Capcom and the FinCom are going to be, and certainly Alex, very involved in the allocation of the ARPA funds. I think it's an important source of revenue for us and want to make sure that we make a very prudent decision using this money.
Thank you, Rosie. And then Jamie, anything on your end?
Yeah. I mean, no, I don't really have anything else to add. I appreciate the conversation from, from the town and from the boards. So yeah, I won't add anything extra.
Sean?
Nope.
The only thing to add is that I, I have a meeting scheduled, Dave, with, with Dana Lara, sort of talk about goals and moving this thing forward on the school agreement. It got canceled on Wednesday because of the power outage, but hopefully we will reschedule for next week. So I agree with you, that should be a important part of next year's agenda to, to get that agreement modernized. And you can go through your board, make sure you have more comments.
FinCon, FinCon, ugh, I can't even say the name. FinCom, any, anything else to add, anyone?
I would, I'd just add, thank Alex and Joe for putting this, this budget list together. I think it was a really good list in the sense that it was, it's general enough to use as a, as a good framework for, for future years, but also had the specificity with things like ARPA to deal with just this current budget. So I thought it was a really good way to, to frame this conversation. So thanks.
One of the things that I, I, we haven't seen is a sort of a constraint from a percentage standpoint. And in the past, we've often looked at anywhere from one to two, two and a half percent as a constraint. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't be, even with the, the agenda items, should we be looking at some more guidelines that would make sure that people are staying within, within a framework that we want to keep, we don't want that budget, we don't want it to explode by any chance.
Right. And I'm curious too, but with our level services budget that we're trying to kind of go off of, what's, what's the increase for level services? Obviously they're going up. You know, what's that percentage and what's the percentage of new capital that we're going to add or deferred maintenance that we need to take care of, things that are overages because of COVID that we can't pay for with ARPA, you know, like the, the gas tanks, stuff like that, things that kind of will all factor in. But I think hopefully between the department head meetings and Joe and Alex getting together, we'll have all that hopefully, you know, in the near future. And we can make some kind of recommendations then. I don't, I don't know, is it too soon, Joe, to kind of throw a percentage on there? I mean, we've, we've kind of stayed within one, two percent different times and, and had to kind of rearrange some capital projects and stuff like that. Is it, what's your thoughts?
I think, you know, the, the first goal is to stay under an override. An override would mean that we're the most, we can grow the budget to a half percent.
Right.
I mean, a half percent of levy. So my attitude is, we have to, to me, that, to me, that's the outside, the outside of it. There, we, we want to understand a little bit better what our complete revenues, we expect them to be. And as Alex said, we should, we should have that in the next week. We can have, we're close on that. But we, there's too many, too much that's outside of our control. If you sell us, we can only, I can control police fire DPW town hall operations.
Right.
But then, you know, something outside of that.
Right. Healthcare goes up.
Healthcare goes up, unemployment, somebody, you know, some other department comes in with a 5% increase, then, you know, there's, you know, there's nothing I can do about that. And then we're going to have to find a way to manage, manage backwards from that, from that outlier. So I think we understand what our revenues are and then we can, we'll continue to have conversations with the board. So let us understand what our revenues-
I think a big part of that is, is our assessment, the property assessment, I should know.
Yeah, right.
So between this meeting and our next meeting on 11:15, there's really only two things happening on the budget. We have FinCom meets on Wednesday. And I don't know if you want to give a quick snapshot of what your agenda will be on Wednesday. And then on the 11:05, which is Friday, department heads are giving the, the sheets to sort of track your forecast for next year's labor, correct? So.
Yep.
And then we meet again on the 15th. So, so that's, that's what happens the next two weeks.
Yeah, I think we're all going to, we'll be focusing heavily on the, on the budget, obviously. I don't know if there's anything else big going on, just a continuation of what we were doing. If we kept everything on the agenda last, from the last time, I think.
The other thing is.
I have a question. Joe, you said that the town budget can be a max of two and a half percent to not be in override territory. Is there a similar estimation for what the schools would be able to do to keep us under override territory?
Our complete spending, town and schools can't be more than two and a half percent increase over last year's levy limit. So right now, they represent 61, 62% of our budget. If, you know, if they were to go up by more than two and a half to three percent over last year's expenses, that would really limit what we could spend on the town side. And that was, you know, kind of the reason we're having more conversations with them earlier. The earlier we make them aware of what our budget constraints are, of what our actual revenue constraints are, the easier it is for them to kind of prioritize and make their decisions over there before they present a budget that we're going to have trouble meeting, so.
I feel like I feel very optimistic that the school committee has really started to hear the concerns of the town's finances. So we'll hope that that continues along those lines.
But this, just to make it clear, but the school budget could still go up five or six percent and we could still be under override. So it's not.
The numbers don't.
But it gets balanced off somewhere else.
It's balanced somewhere, right.
Right, it's like, we've done this in the past where we sacrificed operationally as a town.
Right.
And the school budget has, that's how we've kept it in check. We've reduced our budget when the schools increased theirs. That's how we've made that delicate balance that we don't always agree with, but.
And then the split with Wyndham makes a big part of the deal too. So there's other things in play, but yes, I mean, the two hundred percent, just want to make sure people understand it's not a static number. It can move around based on other things, but.
I understand.
Hey, Joe and Alex, question. When's the first version of the town budget hit, hit our desktops? So for example, like, is that, you have like a date that you'll do the first version and then probably move through, I don't know, 15 different versions by the time we're done? So I'm just trying to get a rough idea when you might have the very first version that we can look at and get a sense of what, is it next year sometime?
Yeah, the first time that it's sort of publicly unveiled is on January 8th.
The 8th, okay.
So that's just, what is that, about nine and a half, about 10 weeks from right now?
Yeah, if I could offer though, one thing that you can consider is that the FinCom will have an earlier look at it. You'll start doing your department meeting, department level meetings with the liaisons from the FinCom to the department heads, starting the week of, what's that, Alex? 11/30.
November 30.
November 30th, the week of, November 30th, you'll start, the meetings haven't been scheduled yet, but that week, the liaisons will start to meet with department heads and you'll get to look at what their budget requests are and what their expressed needs are. So kind of when we were talking earlier about wanting to make sure that the department heads express what their needs are and their vision for how the department will operate. We do that every year in these meetings. They, they're not shy about coming to you and telling you what they need to maintain the status quo and what they'd like to see us bring into the operation. So those things will happen. You'll get a first look at department by department, not an overall rolled up budget figure, but you'll start to look at the operational expenses by department at the end of this month.
And the school superintendent is on the 15th, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, the school department will meet with all five boards with, on December 1st. But then on December 15th, the school committee will vote on a tentative budget based on that, so.
Got it. All right, good. Thanks.
On the agenda, it only said, it's very general, it said, anything, other topics not reasonably anticipated is determined by the chair. Do we have anything else that we want to talk about today for the joint meeting? Not for me. Okay, so you guys, we're going to continue our meeting, you guys can.
Yep, maybe we should just give a second for public comment.
Oh, yes, we can do that, yeah.
Somebody would have.
Correct. Yes, please, we skipped the public comment period. If there's anything that's not on the agenda for the board selectmen meeting or wasn't on the agenda for this meeting, if you want to comment, I will open the mic up and you guys, you can comment.
So there's nobody in the room, so is anybody on Zoom if you want to like make a motion or put, raise your hand or something, we can recognize you?
Yeah.
Oh, Rose, Robin?
Hi, Robin.
Hello, I've been listening to your meetings. Yeah, we've got two computers going on in the room. Thank you. Hello, everybody. I have one concern and I prepared a little slideshow that I would be glad to send to you. This concerns benches at Patton Park, which was a topic. There is a boy scout who's going to be making some benches. Do you remember that from last time?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, picnic tables.
Do you want to say?
Is anybody there?
Do you want to say with the, you can send us a slideshow, but do you want to state what your concern is and then you can send us a slideshow?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, basically, the, and just, your time is very valuable, so I prepared a little slideshow that I can send to folks. This young man, prospective Eagle Scout, was going to make picnic tables and put them in Cutler Park. And I would just like to suggest that a more appropriate place for new picnic tables would be Patton Park. And I outlined that in this little slideshow. So I'd send it to Rosie and maybe she could forward it to you all? Or what would you suggest would be a good way to get it to you?
May I ask, may I ask, Mr. Chairman, if it could be sent to me so that we could review it with Department of Public Works? DPW should actually get an opportunity to log in on anything that we're going to do at the public parks. We want to be consistent, we want to be standardized things, we want to make sure that the materials that are being used are appropriate. So, you know, we welcome recommendations and suggestions. Appreciate the opportunity to review this with Director Olson and come back to the boards with a recommendation, please.
Send it to Joe, please, to Joe D.
This is something that you approved at your last meeting with the young man. And it just seemed to make a lot more sense to put the picnic tables of the quality that they're going to be, to put them in a park that people actually use rather than that doesn't get used, so.
Thank you for the recommendation and we'll force a slideshow and take a look at it. All right, so yeah, so Rosie, if you get that before Joe does, just make sure we all see that and we can talk about it next meeting if we think we want to change our recommendation. Anybody else have any comment?
All right, so I can make a, we'll take a motion to convene the FinCom meeting.
So.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote, David Wanger?
Aye.
John Prulidge?
John Prulidge, aye.
John McGrath?
Aye.
Nick Tensin, aye.
Christina Schenk-Hargrave, aye. Thank you.
Good night all, be well.
Thank you.
Good night all.
Night, David, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good meeting.
You're welcome to stay. We turned over regularly scheduled program, but we did, we are going to go back to our agenda and so we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We did not do, it's sort of on our agenda, not the FinCom agenda, so. You guys can stay for the pledge if you want. Stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation unto God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go through and read the board openings quickly. FinCom and FinCom or the Finance Advisory Committee has two associate openings. Conservation Commission has two openings. Hamilton Historic District Commission has one opening. Open Space Committee has two openings. There's an associate member opening with the Hamilton Planning Board. There's one opening with the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust. The Hamilton Human Rights Coalition has one opening.
Nope, commission, different.
Oh, sorry, the Hamilton Human Rights Commission has one opening. And it says it's a housing authority rep. Is that correct, Joe?
So just. Yep, so it has to be somebody that is associated with the Housing Authority, a resident of the Housing Authority.
And the Zoning Board of Appeals has an associate member opening. Selectmen Town Manager Reports. Let's go around quickly, make sure anybody has anything to add to what we've been talking about, but Sean, anything to add from your agenda?
No, not really, though. I will, I will give Rosie a nod, though, because yesterday, my kids went to her house.
So did mine.
And they got candy plus a wonderful little business card from Selectmen Rosie Kennedy with the little UPC, not UPC, a little, what do you call those things? The scan codes for the master plan.
QR code, yeah.
QR code, yeah, QR code. And I just thought that was genius, Rosie, just a round of applause for you for thinking about that when you're handing out candy to the kids and the parents.
She said hello to you as well, too, so thank you.
Yes, yes.
So thank you for doing that, Rosie.
Yeah, yeah.
But fortunately, I think, I think your plan was to do that on Saturday, right, Rosie, at the rained out event, so thank you for being creative.
Yep, good backup plan.
So Rosie, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. My first thing is I wanted to report that Cooper Blatts has indeed completed and installed their raised planters in the back of the Council on Aging and they're just fabulous. My goodness, really impressive and there were a whole bunch of fall plants in them. Really impressive, thank you to Cooper. Let's see, yes, in response to, thank you, Sean, for your kind words. The Master Plan Steering Committee, we are going to be having our first public visioning session on November 13th at the middle school from 9:30 until 12. And we are really, really working hard to get the word out about that. We want as many citizens as possible. Naturally, I heard from some parents last night about things that they think are important to the town as they were, their kiddies were getting candy. So I really encouraged them to come to that planning session. That was really interesting to listen to. And then the other thing, I probably have other things, but it's been a rough day. I have no heat, blah, blah, blah in my house, my plumber's here right now. Anyhow, I think the date is going to be December 10th for the senior center dance performance by the wonderful Bosama School students. I'm meeting with them later on this week, the director of the school and the community outreach director. They're so excited about it to do something for the community. They've been looking for an opportunity and I reached out to them and voila, we have a really exciting event planned. We're going to have just, it'll be from four to six. We've decided the best day for the students is a Friday late afternoon, so it'll, the performance will be from five, excuse me, 4:30 until five. And then there'll be a pizza supper for the students and the seniors to get together and chat. So hoping to get some sponsorships for a pizza supper. So I probably have other things, but I just wanted to tell you about happy things and those are the things that came to mind.
And Jamie, anything to add?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay. Joe, ready to move on?
Well, can I just, I did complete my town manager report, but I did forget to send it to you this today, so I'll send it tonight. You'll all have it in your inbox tomorrow. One thing I wanted to mention that is on there is that, thank you, Rosie, for mentioning the vision workshop. I just want to make sure people heard about that. The Veterans, Veterans Day festivities Thursday, November 11th. The Legion is going to have their breakfast again and then they're going to assemble here and walk down to the cemetery for the annual memorial for Veterans Day at the cemetery. So people should, if they, they're home and they want to think about why they get the day off from work, they could join us at the cemetery and consider, consider that, that would be great. And I also want to let you know that we got notified today that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional Library will be celebrating their 20th anniversary in the new building on December 1st. And they've invited the board to participate and come to the, to the event on December 1st. And I'll make sure that email gets forwarded out to you all. And if anybody wants, would like to speak at that event, let us know ahead of time so that the library director can, can plan for that. I gave you an update a little bit on some of the hiring. We have a finalist that we're negotiating with for the health director position, the part-time health director position. We have several qualified applicants for the Council on Aging Director position. And that's all good news. And we hired a patent homestead director, Holly Erickson, starts November 9th. So we're all, like Rosie, it's all good stuff.
Update on the, I saw it crane this week, update on the cell phone tower? Is there any news from?
I hoped, oh yeah, you know, thank you for reminding me of that. So we have to have the board sign the easement. I had the easement go to town council. Town council sent it back and said, just make sure National Grid was fine with it. As soon as they get back to me, I will have it and we'll let you know that you can stop by the office and sign it. So we'll be trying to get that easement conveyed now that the board, now that the town meeting is voted for. But nothing new to report yet.
Joe, can I just ask a question? So the terms of that are specifically including that they are to put back into the original shape, original condition, any digging that they need to do for, in a timely manner? Anything they need to do for repairs and maintenance?
No, that would be, that would be conveyed when we, when they come to actually do work, when they get a street opening or a property opening permit from Tim. But the easement just conveys that they have the right to come and do work on the property. They'd need to notify us and work with the DPW in order to make sure that the work is done properly. But the easement is the standard easement that they use across all the cities and towns. And fortunately for us, KP Law is very familiar with the easement documents, so.
Okay, so we will see that and sign it when?
I'm hoping by this week you'll be able, we'll be able to let you know that it's ready. The easement itself was approved by a town meeting, so we just need to, if you want to wait and sign it after the next meeting, that's fine. But I can, I can have it ready if you want to sign it before then, so.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure because we did make that amendment to the motion when we approved this easement, that there would be language specifically that would include their responsibility to repair things. And, and this is for National Grid, right? And I have to say, looking at the amount of time it took for them to, to figure out that we need, that they needed an easement, I just want to make sure that the town and the residents are not inconvenienced by any work that might be done on that, I don't know, with that buried trench. So, so we did talk about that and that was supposed to be part of the agreement. So I want to just stress, I hope that's in there.
All right, next item on the agenda is approve the minute. So it was a very robust meeting, the September 20th meeting. I went through the meeting minutes, I mean, I, you know, I think she did a great job capturing it. You know, it was a hard thing to capture because there was a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth. I, could I make some changes yet, but I think she captured the gist of it, nothing that I thought needed to be changed affected sort of what I said or. The only thing I thought is, I thought the attorney stayed on for the flag policy and didn't drop off. But that was the only thing I sort of questioned of in terms of just fact, was that there was a note that he dropped off, Tim McAlvin dropped off after the, but I thought he stayed on for the flag discussion. How much of it remembers that as well, so that was my only question I had.
That's a good question, I can't remember.
So. So Jamie here, that's the part I actually was on for. And yeah, I actually think he asked permission to leave the meeting or, you know, asked if we needed him anymore, I should say. And I think we let him go, so I think that part's accurate.
I thought I said, yes, we needed him, I thought he stayed on. But maybe this is, so, but anyways, that was the only thing I had. But I had no other change, but yeah, like I said, I just wanted to make a note that it was a very, we had a very robust discussion about town meeting, about, about the flag raising policy, about the alcohol policies. And I thought it was captured in the best extent it could be without rewatching the, it's recorded, so I'm not worried about it. So I'm ready to approve. Anybody else have any comments on it? I wish I could have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a?
A second.
We'll do a roll call vote since we're here, half and half on Zoom, so we'll start with Zoom. Jamie?
So I'm going to abstain because I did have to exit.
So I'm going to abstain because I did have to exit that meeting before, right at the very beginning of the flag policy discussion.
Okay.
So, which was a lot of it after that, so.
Right.
Uh, Rosemary?
Aye.
Sean?
Sean Fairline.
And William Olson, aye.
Okay, next thing is the water abatement request for 35 Junction Lane. So we have that paperwork in front of us.
Leaky toilet, standard abatement over two billing cycles, it looks like.
Yeah, Tim Olson is on board, and as is the applicant, Mr. Sergowitz.
Sergowitz, thank you for having me.
So, yeah, I mean, I think this is something that we've, very similar to other issues, and we have the, we have the, do we have the receipt from the repair?
Can I, can I speak to this, please?
Yeah, Tim.
Yeah, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's a little different. If, and on the page, the second page of the abatement, actually, I get into a little bit more detail of, of the office, DPW office decision. It is, as, and Mr. Sergowitz will probably provide you more detail. We have gone back and forth with a series of emails. It turned out, if I understood the emails correctly, it was a leaky toilet that was repaired. And he did check the meter. The meter stopped spinning. So therefore, it was a repaired toilet. About a month later, he noticed another toilet that was leaking, and then he did those repairs as well. So it's actually.
So it's two separate kind of instances then?
Two separate leaks, similar leaks, but two separate. And so what Mr. Sergowitz is asking for was abatement on both quarters, the May 2001 bill as well as the August 2001 bill. Looking at that in a little bit more detail in our current policy, we only, I'm only at Liberty or, or can only approve an abatement, one-time abatement every 10 years. We have had a series, I think, two in, in recent, last couple of years, that we've allowed on multiple quarters, but they were from the same leak, the same situation. This one evidently was two different leaks. So that's kind of the sticky point in this one. So, like I said, according to the abatement, I do not have, I cannot grant a, a second abatement for a second leak. That's why we are here tonight, both of us. Mr. Sergowitz is here as well, just to come before you tonight to explain.
So what's the difference in the dollar? What's the difference in the dollar amount, Tim? He's, who's asking for the, is it 292 what they're asking for, or 292 what you're agreeing to?
So the first one would be a 292 abatement. So the original bill was 618 and change, and then the revised bill would be around 326. For the first, that would be the May 2021 bill.
What was the other bill that we don't have in front of us?
So it's roughly about the same. The May bill, I think the usage was about 59,000 gallons. The August bill was 56,000. So maybe, I think, around $572 or something like that, if I remember. So two, two large, larger bills, more than, you know, what his current normal usage is. You know, but it did, you know, like I said, I did, I tried to explain it the best I could on the, on the abatement form. But if you'd like to hear from Mr. Sergowitz, that's, that's quite all right, too.
Yeah, I mean, he's on the, he's here, so let's, I would welcome some comment.
Thank you very much. This is Andrew Sergowitz. I appreciate all of you, the select board, for all you do for, for town. And my wife extends her, her appreciation, too. Tim's been great, his team, Gail and Buster have been super responsive, so we appreciate their help. Tim, are you able to share the illustrations that I sent to you immediately late this afternoon?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I mean, I did send them over to Joe's. Yeah, there you go. Yep.
So if, if we're able to look here, the consumption inquiry report was provided by Gail. So these are the readings that were taken by the town DPW. I just wanted to make sure you had those in your view. That's a little bit lower. There is a chart which highlights the start and end dates for Q1 2021 and Q2 2021. So you can see that 92 days is the accrual for 1Q 21. We did have that higher water usage. It did leak into 2Q 21. So I, I agree with Tim that there were potentially two issues. But the, you know, the, the reading was taken on July 19th, I'm sorry, April 14th. And then we did not receive our water bill until May 20th, and that was the day that I called and spoke to Gail over the phone. She was very responsive, got the report out to me immediately. But there were 37 days that had elapsed in the second quarter that, you know, I had had no notification that we had a leaky toilet. The, the town policy states that we would be notified of, of excess usage. We just didn't, you know, I threw no fault to anyone else. As Tim said, they don't monitor excess usage, which is fine. But we had no way of knowing for 37 days that there was an issue into that second billing quarter. So that's why we were just requesting consideration on that.
Yeah, that's, sorry. So your, your, your appeal is just for the 37 days for the first leak into the second plant, but which we, and Tim, we've approved those before, as I remember.
We, well, we, we, we really haven't. We've approved two, two full quarters. But we haven't, I haven't in my time here approved a quarter and then a prorated quarter. I have not, I have not done that. Typically, abatements are for full quarter, full quarters.
Or, or until the leak has been, until they've been notified that the leak and repaired it. I mean, I remember, I mean, we had this discussion last time because we approved two bills one time, so, and I had the same question.
Right, right. And a lot of it, a lot of it, like I said earlier, a lot of it is, is, is when we read, when we do the meter reading, it, it, it's, in this case, it was April 14th. Bills are then processed and prepared, you know, for an early May, you know, mailing. But that come April 15th is on the next billing quarter bill. So that would be, you know, onto the August 2021 bill. So there is a period of time that there is an overlap from when, in this case, when the leak was, was apparent to when the bill was received. You know, we just, and, and then those instances that I referred to earlier, that was, it's, it's, it was the same leak that, that happened. So, yeah, we have, I mean, in this case, it is one leak that spanned one, you know, one quarter to the next quarter. But then there was a second leak that happened in that same second quarter. That was a month later. So that 56,000 gallons of his August bill is, is inflated twice, in a way. It's, it's from that previous leak as well as the leak that he came across, I think, in June 19th, if I remember. So that's, that's exactly, there was, that's the confusion here. That's, that's why we're here tonight, because, like I said, I, I see this as two different leaks. I don't know how much was from the first leak compared to the second leak. You know, going off of what Mr. Sergowitz is telling me, there is a timeline, but it's hard to determine how much actually was from the first leak compared to the second leak in that August bill.
Right. And Tim, when you do the meter readings and Gail or whoever's doing the billing, how, how quickly do those bills go out once the meter reading happens?
So we, in this case, for example, the April 14th was the read, and then they are usually out like the first week or so in May.
Okay.
So we, we go through a series of, you know, meter read, drive-bys, you know, radio reads, and then if we don't get them, we go through again. Then we physically go read. We try to get as much, obviously, as an accurate, accurate read for the quarter. But, and then it gets to a point that we have to kind of stop the, that quarter and then start the bill processing, which is another level of effort to do that. So, you know, it's usually within a month from the read to when the, the bills are mailed out.
I, you know, I don't think we have the amount today, so I think what we do is we approve the, the one that we have today. And I, but I'm willing to consider the other one. I think that makes sense because it doesn't say it only can be one bill. Like, our, our policy doesn't say it's one bill, it says it's one time. So I'm willing to, and we've done it before. We've done it spanning two. I'm willing to consider the 37 days. I just don't know what that amount is, so.
I guess my question is the two different incidences.
Well, he's not asking for two. He's asking for the first incident to be the 37 days, yes, correct, which I'm fine with. It's a one-time, it does, our, our policy doesn't say one bill, it just says one time. So I just don't know what the, I just don't know what that amount is. It's a third of the?
I mean, if you're gonna, if, that's the way you're gonna do it, I, I would just say maybe you table this vote and, and, you know, we work up an actual full amount number.
Yeah, I think so.
With the additional 37 days, and then.
And then we can make a decision. What do you think about that?
Is everybody okay with that? So I think we're willing to consider the 37 days. We just need, we'd rather make one vote, so it was one, so it's a one-time abatement. It makes it look better if it's a one-time abatement.
Exactly.
So I think if we can, on the 15th, vote for a one-time abatement and add the 37 days, I think we can make that motion and approve it.
It, it'll be, just so, if I could comment, it would be on, an abatement on two different bills. So if, I mean, it's probably, looking at it from the billing point of view, it's probably best to have one vote for this and then another vote for that second bill. Just because it, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely two different abatements on two different bills. It could be the same situation. It could be the same leak in this case. But it's gonna be, the way I, the way we have to put it into the system is actually on two separate bills.
No, I, I get that, but it's still a, that's administrative issue. But in terms of a vote, we can vote one time, and it's a one, yeah.
Following our policy, too.
I want to look at the policy, too. So let's table to the 15th. I want to rework the policy. But we have voted for two bills before for one-time abatement. When it spanned, so it was in Florida, someone was in Florida for months, and we approved it. So there's pressing for us to approve it. So if the applicant of the abatement is okay with it, I think it would be in their benefit for us to push it to the 15th and re-vote on it with the additional days once we look at it.
The, the only other thing we have to worry about is, is we're getting into the lien list, the lien cycle. So I believe that is coming up on the November bill, everything. In order for it not to be leaned, it, it has to be paid. All outstanding bills have to be paid by December 1st. So if we, as long as we can, you know, get this, which I'm fine with, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the time, timeline on that.
And this is Andrew. I'm happy to write the check. I, I guess we just wanted some resolution before we wrote a check for something we weren't quite sure about on the appeal process. So I'm happy to, to.
Yeah.
Andrew, like I mentioned in the email, if it's best to write the check, I mean, it's always easier to, I mean, and this is something that we ask. And obviously, if you have the financial means to do it, to write the check for the full outstanding balance, and then we can do the, the abatement afterwards. But, you know, that clears any outstanding balance, and then that doesn't put you into a position in the future. Obviously, I'll leave that to you if, if that's, you know, something you want to consider. But we, we have done that in the past. We, we clear out the balance, and then we work out the abatement. And the abatement would be then a credit applied to your account for future bill.
Understood. And Tim, maybe we missed something in the back and forth. If we were to write the $1,000 check, whatever it might be, we have the means to do so. If we were hypothetically speaking to move out of town, what would happen with that credit?
We would cut you, we would cut you a check for the credit on your account.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm reading the policy right now. Policy doesn't say one bill. It says one abatement. So I don't think we're doing anything against our policy by having it span two bills. So I vote we table this until the 15th, and vote on it as one abatement, and whatever gets worked out administratively to pay the bill by December 1st, I'll let Tim work out with the customer.
Right. And then, Andrew, you can consider whether you want to pay the full amount and then have the abatement credited to the account, or, or if you want to wait till the 15th and then do a check then. Because I think Tim said it was December 1st that liens go out.
Yep.
So you have a little bit of wiggle room.
And Rosie or, or Jamie, do you have any strong opinion of this before we move on?
No, I'm happy to table it. That's fine. And then we can figure out what the amount is.
Yeah, same here. I have some questions, but if the applicant will be back at the next, the next meeting, I'll ask the, the question then, I guess.
Okay, great.
You know, we don't want you to move out of town, so.
All right.
Not in the next two weeks.
So we'll, we'll, we'll table this and we'll put it on the agenda for the 15th.
All right. I'll, I'll have some calculations worked up for that.
All right. And thank you for joining us tonight, Andrew.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
And then, Tim, you're also here tonight because I had asked for hearing from some citizens and thinking about sort of things that need to be improved in our town long term. I was curious if we could start a, sort of a sidewalk plan. Now, we got some, a grant a few years ago, and what that grant can be used for, as well, just looking at our master plan. And I know that they're, we're looking at a master, you know, master plan right now, but are we looking at sidewalks and what, what communities in town don't have access to a sidewalk? And I can name a couple, and, you know, 22 or Highland Street, so.
Essex Street's been the big one.
Yeah, Essex Street and then Highland as well, too. So, so I don't know, Tim, I was just looking for you to help start that discussion, and if you have any recommendations of, of what we should do on a sort of a long-term master plan for getting more, becoming more of a walkable community, not just in the village of the town, but out in sort of the, the more rural areas.
Sure. I mean, I, we can look at, you know, I've had talks with Joe, trying to connect some of the bigger parts, bigger neighborhoods in town. One in particular is the Forest Street area. Many, many families, many houses, pretty good-sized neighborhood. You know, how do we connect that, that part of town, you know, down to School Street, the park, or even downtown? So we can look at the, you know, the, kind of the infrastructure and the sidewalk areas, the, you know, the, as a kind of mapping through town to see how we can connect some of those larger developments, for sure. I mean, a lot of it, to be honest with you, is, it's a cost issue. You know, we do get Chapter 90 that we can use for sidewalks, but we only get, you know, probably $240,000 a year, which seems like a lot of money, but sidewalk is pretty expensive. It's, it's something that maybe we can have more on like a multi-year plan, you know, bank up some of that money and do a pretty good project. The two runs that, that you referred to, the Highland Street and Essex, are, are long, long runs that are, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. So if we can take away at some of it, you know, as, as a phased approach, that's probably something that, you know, we can look into. And I'd be happy to help figure that all out and where we're missing and where we're lacking.
So I think the first step is maybe.
Joe did put together, I, I did send Joe, we did have a conceptual part of the Complete Streets program. I'm not sure if that's the grant you were referring to.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
To Bill, but we didn't get that grant. But I do have a concept drawing for sidewalks connecting Asbury and Highland and then Outer Asbury and Highland. You know, and I think that was a price tag, just those two intersections with the Complete Streets program was about $300,000. So it's, it's not, it's not inexpensive work. It's, it's pretty expensive to, to put sidewalks in. And then considering any type of uptick that we have with that current market.
I think the Essex Street one we had looked at, we've looked at off and on over the years.
We voted at town hall, like a $300,000 study, and that got, that didn't get.
Right.
But I don't think we, but once again, it didn't, I don't think it got really sold consensus. I didn't think people understood what they were voting for, but.
And the Essex Street one, I think, was, I could be wrong, but I thought it was like $800,000. It was a lot.
Yeah.
But there was some other, there was a lot of.
Looking at the, the drawing that you have in front of you, I mean, it's not that much work for $300,000. So we have to be careful in how we spend this money. This is connecting both Asbury streets together and improving those two intersections.
Yeah.
Especially the one with Outer Asbury and Highland. We have to, you know, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty tough intersection, for sure.
You'd be adding crosswalks here in several spaces. You'd be improving these, these intersections. And then you'd be adding a sidewalk from Upper Asbury down to Pleasant slash Lower Asbury on that side.
Gotcha.
And can continue it down a little bit ways to the next crosswalk down here, further down Highland Street. But, you know, that's not a lot of work. It's not a lot of sidewalk, and it'd be over.
Right.
Now, this, this was a grant that was not approved?
We applied for it. We, we didn't, we weren't awarded. We can apply again, but we had, this was through the Complete Streets program. When we did our prioritization plan, this, this rose to the level of the highest priority because of the busyness of that intersection and the number of people that live in the area.
We check, we check a lot of the boxes for the grant, but compared to some of the other more urban places, pedestrian, heavy traffic, things like that, we, we don't, we just don't have that. We don't have the, the location as well as the town in general. We don't check as many boxes as some of these other busier towns.
Were these sidewalks, are we talking poured concrete? Are we talking blacktop? Were these sidewalks, are we talking poured concrete? Are we talking blacktop?
So we're talking, I believe, these ones were granite curb with granite curb with asphalt sidewalk.
Okay.
And then poured concrete access.
The edges, right? The ADA stuff and the, the plates and the crosswalk stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I think it's important and I think we need to figure out a plan because I think it's, would make a big improvement to make more of a walking community and a safe community. But, um, but one of the questions I had too is like, how do we start it? I mean, I think the first thing is sort of, I mean, to take an overall map of town and just sort of, I think it's gotta be like sort of green, yellow, red, like where do we have sidewalks? Where do we only have one sidewalk sidewalks and where do we have no sidewalks? Who would be able to do, who has the resources to do it? Or how much would it cost us to hire someone to, to sort of map out the whole town so we sort of know where our problems are and we can prioritize them?
When we did our street assessment a handful of years ago, was, was it just streets or was it sidewalks kind of, was any of that noted in that big, big?
I believe, I mean, it was pavement, it was a pavement analysis, but it was, there may be, and I have to check the data, there may be, they may have noted that there was a sidewalk present.
Right. I think, I think they did on some of them. I don't know about all of them though, but that would be a good kind of thing to look and get some data from if we do have it.
If that's the case, we have that all on GIS already. We just have to probably populate that layer. Working with that company, that shouldn't be a, a large effort at all, as long as they have the data of where the sidewalk is, the north side, south side, you know, east or west or whatever.
Place if we did get data to put, you know, because if we're, if we're doing street work, we're going to be dealing with sidewalks too. You know, whether there's existing sidewalk or we want to think about putting one in. You know, if you're pulling up the blacktop somewhere, you're going to have to deal with a granite curb or, or whatever, I would imagine. So.
So Rosie, is this, has this been discussed at all in sort of the master planning sessions or is it something that makes sense to, to put into that bucket or not?
Not yet, but I, but we're still early in the plan and I think that, that particular issue was one of the issues that at least one citizen brought up when they were trick-or-treating and certainly other people had brought that up as well. So I, I would think that this would be part of the master plan. How do you get to recreation? And there's so many issues we, we need to address.
Virginia wanted to speak, so I'll recognize Virginia for up to three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Virginia Cookson. I'm at three eighteen Forest Street and I'm talking as a, as a president. I'm also on the commission, as a conservation commissioner, as you know. I absolutely love the look of granite curb. Absolutely love it. However, I know this may not seem as important to the youth folks, but there are certain areas in, in Hamilton which have wetlands across the road. Roads go through wetlands and that's fine. When we put curbing on, that's granite and they look great. It prohibits the amphibians from crossing the road to get the LSI using for breeding purposes. In particular, I remember on Ridge Street at where the conduit goes across and have a beautiful curb on the other side. I watched the, the turtles try to cross to lay their eggs and I also saw them being killed. I saw six bodies. Now, you know, there's turtles, but it does take each group of turtles twenty years to replace a female who's producing eggs every day. So I would just wish that perhaps we could just consider as we go along the roads to put those really ugly asphalt curbings on certain areas when we know we're going by a wetland. I don't think that would take up a lot of space. It may even save some money. So I really wish that the Schleckman and of course the Department of Public Works in particular would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. I think that makes sense as we consider this, if it even, we can make it happen, but I think that's.
Tim, do, do we have a lot of sidewalks with a Cape Cod berm on them or any?
We, we do have Cape Cod berm. The, the only issue with the asphalt sidewalk or the asphalt curb is it just gets.
Gets plowed out.
Gets damaged and torn up with plowing and things like that. So it's very soft compared to the granite.
That COVID has impacted our.
provides a nice edge to plow against.
Granite curbs, you can't get granite curbs anymore. COVID, you can't get, the lead time is ridiculous. So, but anyways, I, I think, somebody else want to speak, Joe? Who else want to speak? Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you. Jack Davis, fifty-seven Lloyd Street. Rob and I have been working with friends of downtown Hamilton, trying to pull weeds in front of the post office. And in the process of doing that, we've noticed that the sidewalk, especially on the post office side of Railroad Avenue, is very uneven. There are a couple of places where there are tripping hazards. There's a raised bit of concrete in front of the post office and also some raised and broken asphalt sidewalk in front of the Hamilton Veterinary Center. I think the other consideration is that just in terms of the aesthetics, as you walk down that, you know, there's different colors of asphalt. Some of the asphalt is broken and unevenly joined and just the general appearance doesn't seem to reflect the quality of sidewalk, especially in the business district that, you know, the citizens of a relatively affluent town would expect. So I would just hope, and this is a sort of a follow-up of a short conversation that I had with Tim Olson after town meeting. But so just hope there was some consideration to be given, not only to where there are no sidewalks, but to the repair and upgrade of our existing sidewalks on Railroad Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you about the downtown.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the process would be. It's a different process completely, but what, is there anything, Tim, we want to talk about in the process for, do you need approval? Or more funding or what, what stops us from repairing sort of old sidewalks? Obviously, it's funding is a major, but who, who owns those? Who can, who dictates it? What's the process would be and how can we help?
Yeah, I mean, we do. DPW maintains sidewalks, you know, and, and a lot of it is just, is funding to do so. You know, we're, we're geared for small work, you know, we don't have the means and methods to do the larger efforts in-house. So a lot of that would have to be contracted out, which is, which is very expensive. Can be done. I just, you know, it's all about, you know, the, the funding and, and, you know, to get the project put out. To get the project put together is not a problem. I can do that. I do that all pretty much in-house. It's just the funding to do the work. You know, it's, that's the, that's the issue.
All right. So we'll, we'll take into consideration, I think, right, I think downtown starts as a priority and then you kind of go from there, right?
It's the budget, it's a, it's a bright time of year to start talking about these things as priorities and, and I thank both Virginia for her insight into some of the challenges with certain types of materials and Jack and Robin is always for their recommendations and suggestions. This is budget season. This is when we're going to start to plan what we might be able to do in the next year. So.
If you can get in the Capcom discussion.
Right time to, right time to add something onto the list for discussion with the Capcom.
And then obviously if there's money from the downtown, you know, just Hamilton downtown.
We've got, we've got meal stacks and HTC and stuff. And the other thing I was thinking of is we, we just, we just paid for a parking study.
Right.
We've completed it. It's, it's mapped our whole downtown with parking spaces and stuff like that and fixing signage and stuff like that. And then maybe something that the Master Plan Committee slash FinCom slash our board thinks about having conversations with the, you know, the local PD about enforcing parking and, and charging for parking or different things like that. What we can do to improve that because that would maybe help fund some of downtown improvements.
I agree.
It's a good idea.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tim, for joining us. I think.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I, we can, I can start putting something together and have something in, you know, for consideration. Some, you know, at least give you some ideas of how long these stretches would be and maybe a magnitude of cost.
That'd be great. Yeah. And then if we need to, yeah, how would you, how we survey town, whether we got to hire somebody for a small fee or whether we do it internal. So. All right, great. Thank you, Tim, for joining. I think that's, I think you're, can jump off now if you need to. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
The next item we had on our agenda was review policy for alcohol consumption on public property. Just so everybody understands, I had Joe put discussion and vote. I, we only need to vote if we are ready to vote. I just wanted to have it be an option. So I wasn't, I'm not forcing to vote, but if the board, majority of the board thinks we're ready to vote, then I'm ready to vote. I, I did look at the policy that Joe sent out. I think there were, Rosie had about four comments on it. I didn't have any comments besides resolving her comments. So I'm not sure if we want to go through hers one by one or if that's already been done. So maybe, Joe, I don't know where we should start with that discussion.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you there. I have been talking to people all, all week and I actually have modified my standstorm ad a bit and again, apologies to the board for, for the lateness of this, but I did talk to several sources and I did modify the policy to perhaps go on a different path and I have reasoning for that. And I did send, I didn't have my phone with me today, so I wasn't able to pull up, I, I, I wasn't able to pull up the, the rewrite until I got home tonight. So I sent it to Joe and I asked him if he would have it available for, for the meeting tonight.
And Rosie, are you tossing, are you talking holistically modified or certain things that you commented on?
It's, it's just, well, it's, it's not holistically modified, but it's more, it's more uniform, I think. And, and my discussions with other towns and with some bartender services have informed my decision to, to modify it in, in a different way. And I will, if the board won't delve to me, I will just talk about why and what experiences I was able to glean from towns that I spoke with and bartender services that I spoke with.
Go ahead. Uh, go ahead, Rosie.
You want me to share this document?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a rewrite of the original, but it's also, as you can see, not in the finished form. And I will tell you, when I, I spoke to the towns of Gardner and to Ipswich and to Essex and two of the towns, Essex and Gardner, don't do any private rentals to, to people for, for whatever reason, but that includes alcohol. I didn't ask them why. They just opt not to. And then I spoke with Ipswich and we had quite an interesting conversation. And it seems like many towns are somewhat confused about this A B C C policy, specifically as it applies to town property and private functions on, on town property. As you, as you may remember, Tom came on and we decided that regardless of what entity caters it, there needs to be a town, that there needs to be a one-day license. So, so what I did was I spoke to a couple of bartending companies and got their perspective and I also looked up the requirements for a twelve C caterer license. Now, in this, in this, in, in this context, we're not talking about food catering. We're talking about alcohol catering. And so I don't know if you want me to talk about the, the particular companies, but I'll just talk about their, their concepts. So, so I think the goals, when you talk about the, the primary goals of allowing alcohol and doing it in a careful way are to protect the public safety and ensure adequate liability insurance. And so I thought about that and I thought about what kind of entities we have in town that provide alcohol. And each one of them is, is, is required to, is required to apply for a state license or a town license that is granted by, by the state. We have so many licenses given by the state and we're allowed to give those out. But I thought about the entities and every single one of them goes through a lot of state requirements. If you think about all the liquor stores, not all, the few liquor stores that we have, we have restaurants, we have the, what is it? The Legion up on School Street and then we have the Community House that also provides a liquor service by a caterer of their choosing. And then I thought about what we're doing. We want to make the patent homestead usable. We want to make it rentable as perhaps a small event center. I, I think that's actually a, a very good idea. But one of the things that we want to do as a town is make sure we're doing it safely. And so I thought about also the, and, and I will say this in all transparency. I, I will say the beer garden that we had, we had not done that before, to, to my knowledge. And we granted one-day licenses to, to a couple of beer trucks. And I have to say, I was there the whole day. And I actually was concerned with seeing people leaving the designated area with drinks in their hands. And I actually men, mentioned it to one of the policemen after I saw the third set of people leaving with open containers of alcohol and walking down the street because there was nobody controlling the situation. And I said, we need to figure out a better way to do this. Anyhow, so, so I talked to two bartender services. I want our patent homestead event center to be safe. And so I thought about the template, the policy that, that Tom had written for us and it still was unclear to me. So I thought, the question is, what do we want to do? We want to be able to provide a safe space. How do we do that? By having as much protection as possible? How do we do that? A twelve C license? Because I looked at what a twelve C license includes. It includes query checks. It includes a necessity for business documents. It has a much higher level of liability than unlicensed. The, the beverage entity that I talked to has a stellar reputation. And then when I look at the not licensed group, they're, they're, they have a lower amount of liability insurance required. They're not query checked. There are just a lot of avenues for things to go wrong. And I looked at the cost differences between having a twelve C, very reputable bartending service and a bartender service that is not twelve C licensed. And the fixed costs were three fifty-five for the twelve C licensed entity. And it was three twenty-five for the unlicensed. And my feeling is if we want this, if we want a service that's going to protect the town, to me, it seems much, much more worthwhile to have a service that has the highest quality of protections, liability, the highest quality of servers. These servers who work for this beverage company are employed by them full-time. They, they, they really keep an eye on things and I was very impressed. This person spent a lot of time with me. I looked at the credentials and they service hospitals, they service universities, they service schools. And they've been in business for twenty-seven years. So they're doing something right. They also have five million dollars of liability insurance with a ten million dollar aggregate insurance. And so I thought about that and I thought about how important it is for us to do this right, looking at the requirements of alcohol licenses within the town of Massachusetts. And it seemed like the right thing to do to suggest to the board that everybody who wants to rent this patent homestead should be required, their, their caterer, the person who is the, who is going to be the server of alcohol should be required to have a twelve C license. And so under that umbrella, I just rewrote what Tom had offered to us. And it includes everything except that uncertainty about licenses and not licenses. This is surety and it requires everybody to have a license and then following Tom's lead, every other requirement is included in this document. The only thing, I didn't finish this document only because I, it's just going to track. The only thing, I didn't finish this document only because I um it's just going to track what Tom had said.
Yeah, I'm I'm 100% fine with it. I I I agree with you 100%. So I think let's just finish it and hopefully vote it next week. But I'm fine with the only thing I I was trying to, and I agree with you to keep it simple, and I think this is very simple, whatever it is, seven or eight or nine steps, whatever it is. Don't think Joe's like, I want, I want to have both policies together in the same policy, right? So whether it's private property or town owned property or whatever, I want it to be in the same document. So I think we need to, so I think we need to take this. So I think this is 100% fine, it could just be page two of a two page document. So page one would be the other stuff and then page two would be the town owned stuff, right?
Well, I mean, I think the difference is that, you know, Myopia comes and wants a one day license so that they can serve alcohol at the
I'm not saying we change the policy, I'm saying just put it in one policy, have it two pages.
But they have, I'm I'm I, they're they're caterers, so I'm going to guarantee you that they have a a 12C caterer license. I can't, I can't say that 100%, but I'm I'm fairly certain that they do. And if they don't, this, this is not a huge deal. They would, they would be required to do that for for the safety of town residents. Maybe we do need to beef up things a little bit, as evidenced by the behavior I saw around the beer trucks. That was an experiment, okay? Um we need to tighten that up a bit. So that's, that's why I'm saying that we need to be um more careful about um giving one day licenses for the sake of all the people who live in this town. And I can certainly work on this. I can call Myopia and speak with them about what they use and what it, what would it take for them if they don't have a 12C license. But I I would find it very hard to believe that they would not have um this license already. In fact, I think about the Community House, they have a caterer. They they use one specific caterer who has a 12C, and a caterer has a 12C license. So
So Joe, I, so I, so I, yeah, I agree, I agree with all that. I think it makes sense what you're saying. I think that we want to make sure that we, and I agree, you did your research, it was awesome. So maybe, Joe, we just reach out to the group that put together the um the Fall Festival and just ask shop local and just say, hey, if we, if we had made you have your people serving beer, a 12C, would have changed the event at all for you, would have been, I just want to know what the impact is, so let's just find out. How much they're going to change our mind?
It doesn't matter, really. They have to, they have to adhere to policy for the safety of of our town. Um that that concerned me to see people marching off with with open containers of liquor.
Yeah, but in the same, in the same, in the same breath though, because they, because they do it on a 12C license, doesn't guarantee it's enforced differently. So there's two different issues happening. One is we have to enforce the rules of, I mean, they're
It could have been a 12C licensed person serving the beer in the beer garden, but if nobody's at the gate of the beer garden, people are still going to walk in.
So I mean, I agree, I agree, they're both problems. I just want to make sure we solve the right problem with the right solution.
Right, exactly.
Okay, well, um I I'm very happy to to do more research. I will talk to, um actually, I will call some of the entities who had the beer garden and talk with them. And I will also talk with um Myopia, does that sound like a
It sounds good enough. Yeah, and I'm 100, just to the Right, I agree, and for the record, I'm 100% in favor of town owned property to require a 12C license 100% of the time. I think Sean's nodding, nodding his head here too. I think the question is for, for events on private property, how are we going to require a 12C license? So that's, that's the only thing open right now.
Yeah, and um we, no, you're right, we we can't. And um I guess this policy doesn't include private property. They are, because we're not, we're not liable for that. There's, there's no liability for the town. Um a private entity having a party on his property is is his responsibility.
So what was that parking lot in, that for the Fall Festival, was that parking lot?
One of the parks that was public, the parking lot that was on Bay Road at the landscaping business was a private property.
Okay, so I agree that, so I do agree that if it's on public property in a parking lot, it needs to be, it's, it's the same, it's the same. I thought that was a private parking lot, so.
And the, and the issue with Myopia, just to backstop, was that Myopia has a license to serve alcohol inside of their clubhouse. They don't have an alcohol to serve, uh have a license to serve alcohol on, for the non property. So I, at, in the past, there have been occasions when they've had a beer truck or somebody, they've come to us for a one day license to be able to have, allow a beer truck or somebody to be there. But that's private property, so it wouldn't be the same.
It wouldn't be the same, right.
Un- unless you decide that you want to try to make it the same, but
That's right, that's right. It's a, it's a trust, that's right. So uh I stand corrected, that's right, the the trust is private property, you're absolutely right.
So I think, I don't think we do, need to do any more research. I think, I think I misunderstood the point. I think, yeah, anything on public property, whether it's a parking lot or a road or Patent Park or Pingery or whatever it is, needs to have 12C license. If it's on private property, that that policy's already written and managed by the A B C C. My question is, is I would prefer to keep it simple for our citizens that we have it on one document. It can be page one is private property, page two is public property. That's all I'm asking.
Right, so it's in one spot.
It's in one spot.
They just disregard the one or the other, depending on what they're doing.
Yeah, that's, that was my only request.
And Rosie, I know you did a lot of research, but I'll I'll throw one more town at you. I don't know if you've contacted them. North Andover has a Stevens Estate.
What's, what's their deal?
They have this thing called the Stevens Estate and they do weddings and different stuff at it. And they've had it for a number of years. I talked to them years ago when we first acquired the patent homestead about, about events and stuff like that. So you may want to reach out to the town manager there, I forget her name, do you know it?
Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes, Melissa Rodriguez. And she might be able, or her office might be able to point you in the right direction to talk to somebody. They have a lot more staff than we do, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And people, people have been really willing to talk about this because I don't think it's a, I I I don't think it's an issue just in our town. Our all towns are trying to think about how to raise revenue in the most responsible way. So I will, I will definitely thank you, Sean, and um it's a great idea. Tell me again the name of that property?
It's the Stevens Estate.
Okay, all right.
I think we're close. I think maybe we can, if we have room on the agenda, I think we'd like to just vote it for next week because I think we're, I think we're in agreement. I think we just need to uh dot the i's and cross the t's.
Yeah. Thank you, Rose.
Okay, great, yeah.
All right, the next item on the agenda was the same thing. I put vote on it just to have the option, but I'm not sure they're ready to vote on it tonight. But it was the um policy for flying flags on town flag pole. So the, after the last discussion, I think I talked to most people one on one and we'll open it up for a discussion. But I think that the consensus I got from the one on one discussion is that, that people were either in favor of having no policy or just going with state and federally recognized holidays and events. And I think that was the majority of people said, you know, that I talked to and on the board said, on the one on one basis, said, to go just to get, no, to not make it, to not make it complicated, let's just go to state and federally recognized holidays and events. So that is where I asked Joe to take the policy and he created a draft. So that's the draft you're looking at right now, is it was still going to be an approval process, just so we know who's flying a flag and when. But we're not making it, it's not going to be an arbitrary based on, you know, some made up, you know, not recycle day or donut day or, you know, any sort of person, just state and federal holiday, just so we have the option and the opportunity to schedule it and and review it and make sure that um someone's over overlooking that that policy. So that's what we're looking at today and um and I'm
Like the lobby for donut day.
And I'm, I'm okay with policy because it gives us, it gives us, it gives us a concrete description, but also gives the board the ability to sort of review it to make sure it's the appropriate flag for the appropriate event. And and we can use whatever resources are at our, and I, you know, at our resource to do that. So uh, you know, once again, we're looking at it for the first time tonight, so I'm not sure we're ready to vote on it tonight. But I'm, I'm, feel better about the framework of it based on our previous discussions. I'll open up to Sean, if you've had a chance to look at it and you have any thoughts on it, and then we'll go to Rose American and
I guess I I haven't looked over it in depth. I've kind of glanced at it, I'm glancing at it now, but I I think we're, I think we're in the right direction with all the different conversations you had. I I think we're just getting, it's getting too kind of complicated and convoluted to, to say the least. But I think if we simp- simplify it and and just go with the state and federal and and say it's okay with us, it's, it's okay with me. But I'd like to look it over a little bit more. And then, like you said, first reading tonight, or first reading of the new reading, I guess.
Yeah, so I think, I think I'll just read it out loud here just because um not everybody's seen the uh policy. But the wording is, um "The Board of Selectmen shall consider whether a currently valid government proclamation has been issued regarding the event, holiday, or cause to be commemorated. The Board of Selectmen will not consider requests for flying flags that are not associated with a state and or federally recognized event or holiday. The Board of Selectmen shall also consider whether the flag being proposed to be raised is generally accepted in rep- as representing the event, holiday, or cause to be commemorated." That's, you know, it's a, that's, it's a, I think, a three page document, but in essence, that's the consideration. Everything else is more about time, duration, approval process. But the flags we are considering is state and federally recognized event or holiday.
So it can be any state or federally recognized event or holiday, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, um the second, the first question I have is it doesn't talk about um a super four out of five selectmen agreeing to this, which is something I thought we had pretty much nailed down the last time. You know, I don't see that anywhere.
With this policy, because we weren't going to be doing anything that was politically, could be politically or or emotionally um controversial, I I did not propose that. I mean, I'm willing to discuss it, but that's why I took it out of there because I thought that we were getting just back to sort of, is it, you know, it's not up to us to decide whether it's a state or federal holiday, it's up to us just to make sure they follow the rules of the, of the application process. It's less about, we don't, we don't really have the ability to have an opinion, we're just, we're just, we're just um reviewing the sort of the facts, right? Is it a federal holiday? Is it the right flag? Okay, did you fill the application correctly? Uh approved by majority vote.
It's still, but it still gives the Board of Selectmen the right to uh whether the application is approved or denied is the sole discretion of the Board of Selectmen, which may do so for any reason or for no reason at all. So I mean, here, he- here we have this Board of Selectmen absolute discretion again. And if you're going to keep that in there, then I think maybe we need to keep in the four fifths. Right, under the purpose?
It makes it easier to say no three to two, so I don't know that it's a, that four to one makes it even, I mean, you're, you're
We can take out that other
I mean, we could take out the language too, but it doesn't help, it doesn't help.
You know what, I I I think, you know, I think um this is still loaded with landmines and you know my opinion on this. And I, I I think if we're going to allow things, we allow things. If we're not, then then we're not, right? And I think when we talk about a guest flight policy, again, um Tom and I rather disagree. If you're, if you're um putting out there a guest flight pole, then you are inviting the public. So I have concerns about that. And here you're saying here, the Board of Selectmen can approve or deny at its own discretion, that's arbitrary. Um I just, you know, I think, I think this is a better policy, but I still think it it needs work. I still think we need to consider the basic premise that the Board of Selectmen, the town of Hamilton, represents all of the people in this town. And something that's important to a towns person here in Hamilton or 25 townspeople um might not be something that's um sanctioned by the state or by the federal government. Um I mean, there are, I will, you know, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Um so I think about National Proclamation Days, right? Um maybe not everybody will will like these days. These, uh we have January 16th is Religious Freedom Day. Um we have, uh let me see here, Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th. Right, whose flag are you going to put up for that? Uh we have Armed Forces Day, third Saturday in May. We have Juneteenth on June 19th. We have Women's Equity Day in August. Um on the weekend before September 11th is a national days, um is designated National Days of Prayer and Remembrance. I'm just trying to point out that I know that when the United Nations Commission brought this to us, they had a bit of a narrow focus. And I want to make sure that if you're saying that any um designated uh recognized event or holiday, that you are going to stand by what you say here. Because there are things that perhaps not everybody um would agree is is okay. But you know my feeling, that we represent everybody and everybody should have a say in this. So I want us to really think about this.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm going to agree to disagree with you on your comment about, just because everybody's a, just because someone's a resident of Hamilton doesn't mean they just get to choose a flag that flies. That's why we're going with the federally and state recognized holiday. What I do agree with you is to change the first paragraph so that it doesn't say that we can just deny it for any reason whatsoever. So I think we need to rewrite that first paragraph because I, we're not, we're we're reviewing the application to make sure it's proper, it's correct, and it's, it abides by the policy. So we don't want to have full discretion to say we can say no for no reason. So I agree that needs to be rewritten. But I'm not against having a policy that allows for state and federally recognized events and holidays to be, flags to be flown.
And then we need to clarify what we, what we mean by um federally recognized, um is it a proclamation day? Is it uh, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we have the language. Recognized event is a proclamation and a that, right?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think so, but yeah.
I mean, I I do, I do see your point, Rosie, on that a little bit. I mean, I guess I just kind of assumed that if the state house is flying the flag, we'll fly the flag. But you said there's, and you just listed a whole bunch of holidays.
We're not, we're not doing this to go along with the state. We're doing it to, to see, to honor what's important to our citizens, right?
Well, right, I I would hope we were in line with the state and federal government.
But but not necessarily. You know, it's, I mean, because it, because there are very loud voices, whatever party is in control at the time. And I want to make sure that this policy, as Darcy would say, if she were here, that it's a, that it's a enduring document, that it's a general document, that it is a neutral document and and that it gives um recognition to anybody within the class of um a state and or federally recognized event or holiday. So let's define what recognized event means. So I'm just talking about that. I think we are getting closer, though, Bill.
No, I I don't disagree with you. So I think we need to re- rework two, two, two sentences, and I'm not making it simplified, it might be complicated to do it. But the two sentences we need to rework obviously are the, are, can we, we really can't say for no reason at all. Or just say because it doesn't meet the requirements of the application, right? And then the second one is, you know, a legal description of, we know what we're trying to say with state and federal houses, but we want to make sure it's, it's concise and clear.
We we want to know what we mean by recognized event. Is it a federal proclamation? Is it, is it a state proclamation? So and my other comment here is, and again, like um like Sean, I haven't read it carefully, but I'm wondering why the town of Hamilton boards and committees would get a special dispensation.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that goes away. That was more when it was um, when it was opened up, when it was opened up to any flag, so yeah.
Another iteration.
Yeah, that will, I agree, that was, that was, that's a leftover clause from the um
Okay, so so we would take that out and everybody's on a a level playing field, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. All right, yeah, I'm I'm seeing possibilities here. I'm seeing, I'm seeing, um, I I'm seeing open mindedness, I'm seeing fairness, I'm seeing tolerance. Um and that's, that's really good.
Uh I think we had a comment from the, a public comment.
Yeah, we had, hold on.
Who do I need to recognize?
I think Nancy Steph is first, she had a comment.
Uh Nancy?
And then Anna.
I thank you very much. Um no, I think you answered my question. I think um it would be helpful if maybe you could share the draft document so we can read it over and answer any questions um in the future, but it it sounds like going with the proclamation, I, you know, I understand that that's the way they want to go. So um I think just um sharing whatever version you have
Joe will share with the, with your committee, because I think that's appropriate, but um, and Joe's gonna, Joe raises his hand, Joe, what are you gonna say?
Yeah, it, in response Yeah, in response to what Nancy said, and to something else in the chats, you guys have spent a lot of time talking about this, there's been a lot of different iterations, that's great, I'd like that the conversation's moving, I'd love to see us redraft it, and then have it on the agenda for discussion on the December meeting, the first meeting in December, but have it up on the website, so that people, anybody that's interested in the public can look at it and comment back to us before you take it up again for your next vote, so rather than try to rush it and try and get it in again in two weeks, and then have people say, well, I didn't get a chance to see it, and how can I comment on it, give ourselves a little bit of time.
So spend the next two weeks getting it right, after the 15th, put it up on the website, bring it up on the, do a public reading on December, first meeting in December, and then, and then if we're ready to vote, vote on the next meeting, so in theory, it could be on three more meetings.
Technically, you've been talking about this policy for so long, I think that you can, you can vote on the meeting on December.
I don't have a problem with that, but I'm just, yeah, okay.
And Joe, if you could date the draft when you do put it, because we've got so many iterations of this, you know, that are maybe out there or half out there.
We'll post the draft as a PDF dated.
Yeah.
And I do like the fact that it's getting more, more simplified, I think that's good, and I do appreciate the board taking time to make sure that we all are in agreement with something we all feel comfortable with, and that's really important.
Anybody else want to comment?
I think Anna wanted to comment.
Yeah, Anna.
And then we haven't heard from Jamie yet either.
Anna, will you go?
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Mr. Olson, so I just wanted to say thank you for letting us see it, because it's difficult to comment if we don't know what we're really looking at, I do have a question though, based on a little snippet that you showed, does the request have to come from somewhere in the community, or somewhere, you know, a third party, or could the select board itself bring forth the motion, so for example, if, if Mr. Knudsen, or Mr. Farrell, or Rosie herself, someone on the board wanted to bring forth a flag request, would that change this in any way, and would that affect the duration? And I'm specifically really thinking about the pride flag, because limited to one week would be sort of out of keeping with common practice, so what happens if it's the board itself that is bringing forth the request, is that a possibility of it?
That's a good question.
Well, we could come forth as citizens, as, as private citizens, right, I don't, my feeling is, there shouldn't be any special favoritism from, from any board, that this, this is meant for citizens, this, this flag policy is meant for citizens to express things that are important to them, so my feeling would be, this is a citizen led initiative once we finalize the policy.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it's two questions, Anna, one question is, is, does it make a difference who submits the application, I would say, I would say no, as long as you're affiliated, whether you, if you have to be affiliated with the town, either as a board or committee or resident, so it doesn't make a difference, but number two is, can you fly a flag for longer than seven days, I think we need to think about that one a little bit more, because we said we could, the board can issue an exemption for up to 30 days in length, so that's, that's still in here, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Jamie Knudsen.
Jamie.
Yeah, the, I guess, the, the, the main thing that I, I think I brought up before, that I will say again, is, and, and it's not going to, you know, ruin my ear if, if it doesn't get changed, but I'm actually a, a little bit, I'm not in favor of the idea of only flying once a year, and here, and here's why, I mean, I am okay with language that says, you know, presumptively, we would only fly a flag once a year, or absent special circumstances, it'll only fly once a year, but, you know, I do think, part of, you know, I think the importance of this, and, and, you know, trust me, the, the pride flag is not the, the only one that this applies to, but this is, I guess, the, the example that I think we can all at least remember, you know, I think when, like with the Pulse nightclub shooting, right, I don't, I think that didn't happen during February, like, but, but the point is, but I, I, I think that there were, you know, some proclamations, I seem to remember, right, you know, pride flags, rainbow lights, and things in response to that, and so, that's really my, my only thing, is like, one of the things that I think is important is us to speak out when, when certain things happen that, you know, mean something to our collective community consciousness, and that doesn't mean that every event is going to require that, I just don't, the way it is in the policy, or the draft policy, the last few iterations, has been a very absolute, it will only be once a year, so that's why I just, there needs to, in my mind, there needs to be some, some wiggle room there.
Yeah, I'm okay with special circumstances, I, I think that I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, once again, that was in there for someone to, you know, fly the recycling flag, and they wanted to fly it once a month, you know, for, I just, we didn't want to like have it be up there every, the first of every month for-
If you don't want an application every other week, it's the same thing.
Yeah, for the same thing, so, but now that we've changed the holidays, I mean, and if the same flag represents two holidays, then, then sort of, it's, it's a gray area, right.
Or there's some kind of world or national event that happens that we would want to support it.
We'd limit it for no reason whatsoever, right, limit ourselves for no reason whatsoever, so, yeah, so I think, I think that's something we'll look at next month, thanks, Jamie.
And actually, that my only other real main comment, since we are going to be looking at this again, is I do think we should have town council review, I mean, even, so maybe we do need like at least two more meetings potentially, unless he, unless Tom looks over this last draft, and particularly about that first paragraph, so Bill, you were talking about, oh, we got to take that part out, and not, I do understand that the, that the phrasing, or for no reason at all, like, seems like a very awful thing to put in a document, but at the same time, I think it was probably in, it might have been the very first draft that was in there, and it's in there sort of for, you know, a legal reason that relates to, you know, the case that's going to the Supreme Court and things like that, that this is government speech, it's not a free speech, so, and so that's just the, I think, the point of that language, but really, my punchline is just, I would, you know, I, I think it's important on the legal aspects of the, of the policy to have Tom give it a review.
Yeah, right, said, yeah, that was my comment too, I don't, I don't mean to make it simple to rewrite that sentence, it's probably complicated, but I think it needs to be looked at, so it doesn't put us in a position where we're, we're denying somebody something that we're not, we're not, we're not reasonably should deny them of, right, so.
That's right, that's right, that's important, and that's, that's my main stipulation, because if we are having a guest flag policy, I think you open yourself up to perhaps some issues if you say it's a guest flag, and then you're opening it up to the public, but only certain, certain parts of the public, I think you could run into some problems there.
Yeah, I also-
And even, even, even if, even if the party who, who wanted to sue, or caused some legal difficulty, even if that party ultimately did not prevail, it certainly will cause the town an awful lot of thanks, and an awful lot of money to, to defend something like that, I think, I think people can make a good argument, and, and I want to make sure that this is open minded and broad enough where people will feel that they are heard by their government, this is a guest flag policy, right?
Yeah, and I think, and I think we might, we might look at that term too, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, it's probably no longer a guest flag policy, because it was a third party flag, now it's not, so I think we should look at that too, what we're calling it, because I agree, that could be misinterpreted, so, so we got a few things to look at, the name, actually, the name of the flag policy, how, how we approve it and review it, how many days a year, and how many times a year, and, and then describing what actually a proclamation means, so, yeah, I think we've got some work to do, but I think we're getting there.
Great.
Okay, anybody else have anything, before we move on? Okay, so we're gonna, so the goal with that one is that we're going to may, may or may not review it on the 15th meeting, but by the first, we will put it on the, put it posted to the website.
It'll be a version posted on the website, and we'll have it reviewed by town council.
And then we won't, we won't vote on it until there's been at least a two week period for people to have viewed it on the town website and issued comments, or prepared to comment at a meeting, all right, and the next thing on the agenda, sorry, I'm on the wrong.
Each one has two copies, Darcy's not here, this was, Jamie was on the, on the call with the folks, but-
Sorry, I'm on the wrong.
Yeah, debriefing discussion of unconscious bias workshop is the last thing on the agenda.
Sorry, let me get back to here, last thing on the agenda was, a debriefing discussion of unconscious bias work and training, which is, which is for Darcy, so we should table it until Darcy's in part of the meeting, correct?
Right, I, I think she would want that.
Yes, I agree.
Same with me.
And then we have cemetery deeds we need to sign after the meeting, 12 18 and 12 19.
And they, Sean signed them, Bill's going to sign them, and everybody else can come in and sign them, well, not everybody else, Jamie and Rosie and Darcy.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make Darcy's motion? Are we at that point?
There's nobody here to make Darcy's motion.
I'll make Darcy's motion.
All right.
I make a motion that the Hamilton Board of Selectmen adjourn for tonight.
I have a second.
Second.
Sean, second that, and we'll do a roll call vote, we'll start with Rosemary.
Rosie Kennedy, aye.
Then we'll go to Jamie.
Jamie Knudsen, aye.
Sean?
Sean Farrell, aye.
William Olson, aye, thank you all, very productive conversation tonight.
Thanks, Rosie, thanks, Jamie, thanks, everybody that joined us, thanks, Robyn.